Tonight's event is presented by WIC Radio, the Davis Sentinel, the Greater Jackson County Chamber of Commerce, and the Scottsboro League of Power Corps. We would like to thank Brad Dudley and his staff for hosting this event tonight. I would like to introduce Scottsboro High School Senior and Student Government President, Julia Vale, who will now come and do the pledge of allegiance. Please sit down.
Attention, select pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag and the United States of America, and to the republic which stands in our nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
During this 5:30 to 6:30 hour, we're going to be meeting the candidates dying in Scottsboro City Board of Education. For Place One, the candidates are Ricky Dooley, David Garza, Mitzi Gaddis, and Patricia Cobb Stewart. For Place Three, the candidates are Darryl Eustace, Lyndon Rogers, and Jason Allen Williams. I'm going to invite them to the stage at this time. Prior to the start of this segment, we had each candidate draw numbers, determine the order in which they will begin. Candidates, as you speak, if you'll direct your attention up front, they're going to give you the time limit. We'll give you the increments in the morning zone times. Rick's up front, he'll be the one doing that. We will begin with the candidate who drew the number of one. Each candidate will be given two minutes for a short introduction, and then we'll begin the question portion of the floor. Our first candidate, the Scottsboro City Board of Education, is Ricky Dooley. So let's put a good step forward, Douglas, and sit down.
Thank you. Let me go and place number one so I can get this over with and relax. I am Ricky Dooley, and I'm a candidate for Place Number Two on the Scottsboro City Board of Education. I just want to give back something to the city. I've lived here for over fifty years. I set up my wife, and we have two boys, Byron and Robert, who are all products of the Scottsboro City School System. My wife teaches at Caldwell. I have a grandson in third grade at Groundwood. And I promise to you I'll cast all my votes in best interest of the students. I'd like to make sure that every child receives a quality education and be ready for life and for high school.
Thanks, sir. Our next candidate for the Scottsboro City Board of Education is Mr. Darryl Eustace.
Good evening, I'm Darryl Eustace. I appreciate all of you coming this very important that we had this forum, so that everyone could visit together for us. My wife is in the back saying, "Eustace, maybe you know her. We've been in town here for twenty-seven years." And I have to put that right because we moved here when we got married, so I've got to remember that number. Twenty-seven years, my daughter Amy Lee's back there. My daughter Curious is living in Florida right now. I'm working for her job, they're both graduates of Scottsboro. Curious, what I'm doing is civil engineer, and Amy Lee is a senior ex-graduate right now. Landon's also here, he's a tenth grader at the Scottsboro system. So I've had kids in this system since nineteen ninety-seven. I've got three more years to go. So I have very much of a vested interest in the Scottsboro City School System. And I think number one is our education of our students, and our young people in our communities. Many people say, "Well, you know, first thing we need right now are jobs. We need some economic development." But let's take it frankly. You know, you're not going to have good economic development if you don't have a good education system. We're working on that now, and I think we're making good progress right now. And I'm currently the board's president, and I know sometimes that's a positive and some people that's a negative. And the last one. But I'd be glad to answer any questions. And I try to effort with one, get some budget information as a candidate, make your decision, and I appreciate all of your focus on August twenty-third. Scottsboro City Schools, blessed to be here.
Thank you. Thanks, sir. Our next candidate for the Scottsboro City Board of Education is Jason Williams.
Good evening, I'm Jason Allen Williams. Currently seeking election for the Scottsboro City Board of Education, Place Three. I'm a lifelong resident of Scottsboro, a nineteen ninety-one graduate. I married Mandy Williams. We have two wonderful children, Trent and Talon. Trent is currently the mascot here at Scottsboro, and he's a senior. Talon is a freshman, he's involved in baseball right now. My purpose for running for Scottsboro City Board of Education is to try to be a voice for all the students, parents, and faculty. And I would appreciate your vote on August twenty-third. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next candidate for the Scottsboro City Board of Education is David Garza.
Good evening, you guys look entertained tonight. My name is David Garza. I have not left law school in Scottsboro. I actually moved here about ten years ago now. I have not known Mr. Garza anywhere in town. We have Aubrey, Zachary, Isaac, or Natalie's dad. Going anywhere in Walmart, and that's my name. So I would run for Place Two just because I figured I could probably get back to a school system that has given much over an awful lot. Two in Caldwell now, one over Collins, one over Nelson. And they keep me busy, but the school system is amazing. And I think that it continues to keep on being amazing and grow, but I think I get a lot too. I appreciate you voting on twenty-third, and good luck to everybody.
Thank you, Mr. Garza. Our next candidate for the Scottsboro City Board of Education is Lyndon Rogers.
Good evening. Like I said, my name is Lyndon Rogers, and I've been in Scottsboro since 2010 after my husband retired from the Army. This is a place we call home after a long career in the Army. And it's a refreshing place to be. As we were looking for a place to move down in this area, we were looking in homeschool, we kept going through Scottsboro. And Scottsboro was a place that I liked. And we made it our home in 2010. This is our home for good, our final destination. I think the schools here are good, and I want to help improve them. The budget is one of the issues at hand these days. I have a lot of experience working with budgets. I've managed multiple programs. Currently, I manage twelve different programs, and they all have their own budgets and budget issues. I do have a son, who is fifteen, and he is a sophomore in the high school. I have, and he's been at Caldwell, he's been at the Junior High, and I was in the high school, and he's doing fabulous. I also had a foreign exchange student. This is my first year doing that, and so far, it's been fascinating. We lived in Germany for three years, and so I love the culture, and I was lucky enough to get a German student. So we will hopefully continue that, even after David, my son, has grown up and gone, to be able to share our experiences in the great place of Scottsboro. I hope that you vote for me on August twenty-third next Tuesday. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Ben. Our next candidate for the Scottsboro City Board of Education is Patricia Cobb Stewart.
Good afternoon. I'm Patricia Cobb Stewart. I'm married to Gary Stewart. I have three children, and I have Nana Stewart, who is a sophomore at Auburn. I have Emma Stewart, who's in the back here, she's a senior. And then I have Tom Stewart, who's in fifth grade. So I feel like I have a very vested interest in the school system. And that's why I'm writing. I'm a graduate of Scottsboro High School in nineteen eighty-one, Auburn University with an accounting degree, and University of Alabama School of Law. I came back here in nineteen eighty-nine, and from the time I came back here, I started working with kids through church, through scouting. I've had a Girl Scout trip, I've just always volunteered with kids. And I've always felt like that we needed more parental involvement in the school board. And that's basically the decision I made, and that's why I'm writing. Also, I've come from a long line of educators, so I'm familiar with the needs and the responsibilities of being an educator and the sacrifices they may make. I would like for you to consider voting for me for Place Two of the Scottsboro Board of Education. Thank you.
Thank you. Our final candidate for the Scottsboro City Board of Education is Ms. Mitzi Gaddis.
First of all, I'd like to thank Mr. Vale and all those who made this forum possible so that I might introduce myself to those of you who don't know me. My educational process began when I was very young. My parents were Ray and Billy Collins, and my dad was principal at the time. I have two sisters, and he would bring home the schedule cards way before the days of computer. And as soon as we learned what F was for female or girl, and M for male or boy, we got to separate the cards. So the educational process began for me at a very early age. I have two sisters, Nancy Gardner Florence and Judge Jennifer Holt of Scottsboro. I graduated from Scottsboro High School in nineteen seventy-two. After graduation, I married my high school sweetheart, and have been married for forty-four years, to Grady Gaddis. We moved to Florence and graduated from the University of North Alabama. I received my BS degree in English and Special Ed, my Masters in Special Ed and Administration, and my EDS in the nineties in Special Education. I've been an educator for over forty years. Grady and I have three adult children, Amy Lee Bradford, Daniel Gaddis, John Gaddis, and four grandchildren. I would appreciate your support on August the twenty-third, Scottsboro City Board of Education, Place Two. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Gaddis. We will now enter into the question and answer portion of this Board of Education hour. Candidate number seven, Ms. Mitzi Gaddis. I guess we should just let you stay.
Yes.
Ms. Gaddis, what do you believe the role of a board member is?
Well, the role of a board member is limited. The hiring and firing of superintendents and financial persons. But I think the Board of Education lends itself to a bigger role, and that is representing the citizens who put them in office. Now, you can do this by listening to concerns and wonderful ideas that could be brought forward, and, you know, putting them on the table. Let's discuss them. Let's see how we can better things. And I, that would be my purpose, is to represent the community in a way that I think you would be proud of.
Thank you. That's, we'll come back. This time, we'll just sit down and stay for a second. Thank you. Now, Ms. Patricia Cobb Stewart will be the next candidate to answer the question. Ms. Stewart, a question again. What do you believe the role of a board member is?
I think the role of the board member is, like Ms. Gaddis said, I think we're there to make sure the superintendent does their job, to go over the budget, to make sure that monies are being spent appropriately, and to bring forth ideas, and to talk about things that need to be done, and talk to the superintendent about what needs to be done. We're not allowed to hire or fire, that's not our job. Our job is more of an advisory capacity as far as the day-to-day running of the school system goes.
Thank you. Ms. Lyndon Rogers, will you please sit up? Ms. Rogers, what do you believe the role of a board member is?
Okay, well, one of others there have already kind of indicated that our role is somewhat limited, but we are responsible, to be fiscally responsible with the budgets and ensuring that the needs are met for the clients, I was going to say consumers, I'm not that old. And also to present some ideas as they come. We have the opportunity to do so, and to listen to the community. What do they have, questions about, or suggestions, and discussing those when we are, you know, having work sessions and different things like that. One of the questions that I've had just out going door to door was, you know, I want software in the schools about hiring and firing people, like you had said. And, you know, I think a lot of people have a misconception of what the role of the board is. But to me, the role of a board member is to be open to what is presented, identify the barriers to some of the problems that come to the board, and to identify ways that we can overcome those barriers. I do have some ideas that I would like to present if I become a board member, is some services that I've identified that we could provide in the schools at no cost to the schools. And that is some services for those having behavior problems, maybe some mental health problems in the school. And that is through the Mental Health Center. And a lot of the client for kids in the schools have Medicaid, and Medicaid replaces for the services that we provide, intensive, in-home, and that includes in the schools. And that will not only help a child function better in the classroom, but also help the teacher dig in.
Thank you. Mr. David Garza. Mr. Garza, what do you believe the role of a school board member is?
Everything that they've said is true, that would be the goal. But one thing I think we're missing is the voice. Somebody has to be able to be the voice of not just the students, but also the parents and what their expectations are. Coupled with that, we need to have some BD, to be that buffer between educators, administrators, and the students. The school board can be that. It can be a lot more than just somebody to sit back and make decisions and make arbitrary rules or regulations. I think that we're missing a lot of opportunities to get input from the community, from the children themselves, especially the high school students, because, you know, they will be the future. The parents, the parents definitely need to be able to be the voice in the community within the school system, because that's where the tax dollars go. I think that if we can help facilitate that a little bit better, that things could actually be a little more positive.
Thank you. Mr. Jason Williams, you lead the hands. Mr. Williams, can you tell us what you believe the role of a school board member is?
I think they pretty much summed it up. I mean, it's like Mr. Garza said, you need to be a voice. You need to be there for your faculty, your students, your parents. You need to take pride in where you're at, what you're doing. That's what we're about. So I have to echo what they said. I mean, it's all the above.
Thanks, sir. Mr. Darryl Eustace, you can only imagine what the question's going to be, and I'm going to repeat it anyway. What do you believe the role of a school board member is exactly?
I said it's through different parts, okay? There's a statutory requirement of the role of the school board, which is you're going to hire and fire the superintendent, the CSFO, and attorney, basically the top of the management team, you have to write, to control those. Anything lower than that point takes a recommendation by the superintendent, and those include policies. So there comes the policy role, and the statutory role, the policy role. And you, along with the superintendent and the management team, you create the policies that will control the school from the bigger picture, not the day-to-day nuts and bolts, but from the bigger picture. And you also have the cultural side of it and the community side. The community side, you know, being open to the parents most of all and the students. Because without students and the parents, then the school has no sort of function anymore. And so you have to be open to them. You also have the cultural role that I talked about of, you can help create and mold the culture of the school, and that is not only the students, but also the employees. And take that into a particular direction that you believe it needs to go, and that's a team approach to do that. And I think over the past few years here, a lot of this office, we've been able to do that. You've seen some culture changes, you've seen some policy changes. A lot of that has changed. So we take a little bit of a different direction than where we used to be, a different direction in hirings, different directions in firings, and the way we do things, and the way we evaluate teachers and principals, the way we evaluate students. And all this is to create a better student in the end that has a better opportunity to thrive as a young adult and on through as an older adult, whether they are going out straight into the workforce, whether they go to the military, whether they go to college. It doesn't really matter. The school is supposed to prepare them to do that and be able to do that well, and create a life for themselves so that they can create a family just like, you know, their family members did, and move on through their life and enjoy life.
Thank you. Mr. Ricky Dooley. Mr. Dooley, what do you believe the role of a school board member is?
Well, like Mr. Eustace, is hiring and firing the superintendent, the CEO, and the school board attorney. You have to, I think that we need to, I'll have an open-door policy as far as people with problems and situations they need to talk to. I think the school board as a whole should have that, that they have accessibility to the school, and that they can talk about their problems. I think the superintendent needs to have a similar policy, that if you have a problem, you can feel freely to go to them. Because we're there representing you, the parents. The students deserve the best education that we can give them. And I'm like, Mr. Eustace, you know, we need to prepare the students when they get out of high school that they can have a productive life, whether they go into college. Some kids are not college material. You know, they're train school, way they train. You know, some students are college material. You know, that's it.
Thanks, sir. And don't run out of grace, we're going to reverse this cycle again. Now for the second question from the school board candidates. The school board candidates will have two minutes to respond to the question, and we're going to begin with candidate one, Mr. Ricky Dooley. Mr. Dooley, what strategies would you use, would you propose for improving the system's financial situation?
Well, I would, I would like to be elected at school board, to be able to look at the financial situation. I think there's areas that we can improve it. It may cost people some hard feelings about what cuts could be made. But everybody wants more money. I want more money to pay my electrical bill. School board wants more money to pay their water bill. It's all of it. The state wants more money, you know, and I think that that's, I would, I would like to look at all revenues and how we could increase revenues without taxes.
Thanks, sir. Now back to candidate number two, Darryl Eustace. Let's use a good ones. Ms. Eustace, what strategies would you propose for improving the system's financial situation?
All right, this is a big question, so I may talk kind of fast. First of all, I'm still in the board now, so I'm very proud to say what we've done with finances. All of your ready to fight from some time back, that we're terrible financial situation. That's true. Been in that situation for quite some time. This is nothing new, didn't come overnight. Got a lot of bond in debt, and it's been there for a long time. And we've changed the ways that we're managing people. We've changed the ways that we're managing expenses. That's helped a lot. School boards can't create their own incomes, so you're stuck with what you get, so you have to manage it, you can't increase it. This past May is the first time in a long time that we have met our ending, monthly ending fund budget files, which is a very big deal for us. I was shooting for February, and so the staff didn't think we'd get there by February, but we really got there by this past March. So that's a very good thing. Now, we have other expenses right now in starting schools, so that number will come back down a little bit. But hopefully by the end of the year, we'll be able to do that. And just if you don't know, it takes about $1.7 million per month to run a school system. I know that sounds like an off, no, I didn't mean a year. No, that's per month to run a school system. Okay, that's out of the general fund budget, but that, about eighty-five percent of that is salaries. So to say there's any one thing that we can do that'll make this better, you know, it's not any one thing. It's involved a few things, and a management of all those things put together to make the finances better. And the finances are getting better. Now, they're not going to get better overnight, and nothing is going to solve the problem overnight. But they are improving. And right now, actually, it's a better cash flow scenario than it has been in years. Outside of the general fund, you have the capital fund. Right now, we have $1.2 million in the capital fund. We basically didn't come and official workforce, told that we're, so that we could work on the general fund and use that as basically security against it. And that's what we've made it to be for the last few years, and now we're positive side of that. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Jason Allen Williams, candidate number three, please. Mr. Williams, what strategies would you propose for improving the system's financial situation?
I think one, we would have to go, you know, get to see the mayor, council members. You know, I think that we're taxed today, okay? So I think there's, there's taxes that are there that we can use. We just need everybody to work together to put that in order. You know, like Ms. Eustace said, it takes a lot of money. You know, I'm not in there yet, but, you know, maybe August twenty-third, I'll be there so I can learn a little more, a little more about it. But, you know, we just all will have to work together. It's going to have to start from the mayor all the way down. And I just think that's one thing we need to do.
Thank you, sir. Candidate number four, Mr. Lyndon Garza. Mr. Garza, what strategy would you propose for improving the system's financial situation?
Well, yeah, everybody here's addressing really good issues. I know the ones, there are some outstanding bond issues that that just has to be handled and give. But I think the biggest thing is if you look at Scottsboro as a giant jigsaw puzzle, you figure just one piece isn't going to solve everything. You've got the students, you've got the citizens, you've got the administration from mayor all the way down, and you figure that each one has to fit a certain way. We really want to work together to make anything work, to make a really big picture. And I think that to a certain extent, we have to be willing to give and take and have open dialogue. And I think hopefully at the end of this entire election cycle, we can just sit there and realize that that open dialogue and the willingness to communicate as long as to look at our budget, to look at ourselves and say, "Okay, look, our children are our future, and the children are the effect, is what's going to build Scottsboro further." We're losing, we're losing citizens at a, at almost historic rate at this point. People aren't staying in Scottsboro. I think part of some of that is our education.
Thank you, sir. Candidate number five is Lyndon Rogers. Ms. Rogers, what strategies would you propose for improving the system's financial situation?
Okay, I want to first talk about the experience that I've had implementing problems with budget cuts that we've had with mental health. The Mental Health Center system has also continually gotten budget cuts. And we've been able to come up with some outside-the-box ideas to make it work, to make sure our consumers are taken care of and their needs are met. And I would utilize those same ideas and skills in doing the same on the school board. And I think I can offer some good input based on that experience. I was a program director for a mental health center up here, and like I said, I had twelve different programs. And also, before I came here in Virginia, I was a program director for a regional jail. We provided mental health and substance abuse services. And, you know, we were continually, that's when the budget cuts with mental health and substance abuse was going deep taken away. So we're having to do more with less, and that's the same with the school system. So I like to get in there and look at all the details of...
Um, so I like to get in there and look at all the details of each line item, what's going on, and then, um, collaborating with the other board members and the superintendent and, um, improving the situation. And like Darryl had mentioned, it does take time for these things to turn around and for things to, new ideas to be implemented. So, um, I think we are going in the right direction, and I'd like to continue to go in that direction as your, uh, school board member in place for it. Thank you.
Thank you. Candidate number six, Ms. Patricia Cobb Stewart. Ms. Stewart, what strategies would you propose for improving the system's financial situation?
Well, I think that everybody's pretty much covered it. I think that, that, first of all, I need to get in there and see where all the money's going. I do have the accounting degree, so I can, uh, read the books and kind of see where some of that's going. But we need to see where we can, uh, come up with more funding, uh, what things are outside of the box, like, like Ms. Smith said, that would enable us to grow out the programs that we need. We also have to look at ways to reduce our spending. We can't always fix problems with just more money, um, we have to figure out how to do more with less all the time. We have to do it in our homes, we have to do it in the school system. I think we've got good people working here, and I think that one of the things we need to be sure is that we don't hurt the people that are actually working just in order to reduce cost.
Thank you. And now candidate number seven, Ms. Mitzi Gaddis. Ms. Gaddis, what strategy would you, would you propose for improving the system's financial situation?
Well, I think this is where unity begins to materialize. I think we have to look at the city council and the mayors and, uh, the community, and try to unite everybody to see if there are any other funds that are available. Uh, secondly, you know, if, if cuts are required, I think the first thing we have to look at is making cuts that do not hurt those that we're here to help, which are the kids. You know, if we get, uh, if we have to eliminate teachers, that means larger class sizes, and that, that can, uh, be a barrier. So I hate to see cuts come from, uh, teachers, anything that affects the children's academics directly. You know, I think we should, you know, work with community, work with, uh, the council, the mayor, and come up with ideals, because we're all in this together. Businesses that the city wants to bring in, they look at our school system, and we want to provide the best school system, uh, the greatest academic program we can in order to draw in more businesses. So that would, those would be some of the solutions that I would look at.
Thank you, Ms. Gaddis.
Thank you.
And before you sit down, uh, let's run that up.
All right.
But at this time, we're gonna give each candidate two minutes to speak to voters and, and make a pitch, you know, settle yourself. Uh, we're gonna go into verse order again, and have our final comments, so that's why it's gonna get us to stay up there. Ms. Gaddis, you're gonna have two minutes to, to just speak in your heart to, to the voters of Scottsboro.
I love Scottsboro, and I love education. I spent forty years of my life actually teaching and working with students. I miss that. But now, I, I feel like I could work in the educational system in a different form, and that would be as your voice, representing, uh, you all and the schools, and doing what I can do to further the academic process or, or the educational needs of the student through whatever manner that, that might present itself. I have a vested interest. I have four grandchildren who, we figured out yesterday when I graduated till twenty-twenty-seven, so my goals are set high. Uh, and I would do everything I could to make their academic, um, education and, enriching their lives through education. I thank you for this opportunity. I hope that you'll consider my qualifications and my desire to be your voice on August twenty-third. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Now, Ms. Patricia Cobb Stewart, candidate number six.
I'm gonna make one last pitch to ask you to consider voting for me for the school board. Why I do that, mainly because of the children. I've always had a heart for kids, and I'm always one of the best for them. It doesn't matter that it's my kid or it's your kid, or it's Ms. Joey sitting over here. I know the kids, I've always been involved with kids, I wanna see these kids grow, and I'll always listen to the kids, and as a parent, I know there are problems that maybe the educators don't see, maybe the administrations don't see. I wanna be a voice for you too, as a parent. I want you to be able to come to me, and I can bring that to the board. I can, I can say, hey, this might be a problem, we need to think about this. For example, when we did some scheduling and softball girls, if they made it to state, they would admit graduation. Those are the kinds of things that most people don't think about. But when you're faced with it, you realize what's going on, especially if you're a parent. We've got a great resource up here in Jackson County Northeast. I don't know that we're always using it. I only know that all these high school kids realize what a great resource it is, and how we can use that, and maybe we can get them to come down here. I think there's ideas on the table that we can get together, and we can make Scottsboro better, make the education system better, and I'd like to ask for your vote for school board. Thank you.
Thank you. Now candidate number five, Linda Rogers.
Okay, um, one of the things I want everyone to know, um, I've already kind of given you my resume in a, in a way, in a sense, um, but I do have a criminal justice degree, I do have, I am a licensed professional counselor, and I do have a doctorate of education. Uh, I've been all over the world, um, traveling, military, and all of that. I've worked with a lot of, I've worked with a lot of people, different cultures, uh, even within different schools, within the community, the military community, and, um, I think I have a lot to offer of the school board. Um, I'm, I'm relatively new to the area, I've been on a lot of committees and boards, and met a lot of people in the community, and I've always worked, in everything that I've done, in improving the community that I worked in. Even if it was a three-year tour in Germany, or wherever it was that we were, that was my home at that time. Scottsboro's my home for good. This is our final destination, like I said. Um, I want to work closely with the city council and with the mayor, um, and, and come up with some different ideas, like some of the others were saying, and I do have some of my own ideas that I'd like to, to kind of throw out there when the opportunity is there. Um, and just, I like the fact that I have worked with budgets in the past with big programs, um, with, when I was in Germany, I was the Outreach Deployment Mobilization Program Director. And we were preparing, um, soldiers, civilians, retirees for the imminent deployment to Afghanistan. So I do believe that I have a lot of vast experience working with children and, and families and the community in general, and I think I bring a lot to the table, and I hope to have their vote, um, next Tuesday, Wednesday, thank you.
Thank you. And now, Mr. Danny Garza, would you please come forward and, and make your final pitch?
I believe that, uh, I've discussed what was called, kind of like a giant family, and, uh, I like to think that I kind of joined that family about ten years ago. You guys have all been listening to me be very, very open-hearted, and, uh, it's been I'm a parent above anything else, and I think that part of the school board, at least they're asking some type of parent representation, somebody that can say, hey, look, I've got kids in the school system, I need this, or, you know, I at least have some of the vested interests. I'm gonna have a daughter that's gonna be in school for another twelve years, at least, she just started kindergarten. And the one thing that I can think of is, do I want somebody making decisions, whether they be small or big, based off of a budget, solely the budget, nothing else? No, I'd rather have somebody have a little bit of heart with it, make some type of decision that not only includes the budget, but also includes what they're hoping the future's gonna be, because like or not, any decisions that we make at this point impacts every single child that goes through the school system. Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Mr. Jason Allen Williams, if you'll come forward and share with us your final apology.
I don't know if a lot of y'all are out and about in any games or anything, but most time I'm there, I'm kind of behind the scenes helping the mascot. I got a passion for this town, I got a passion for this school. He gave me something many years ago, and I'd like to give back. Remember me, August twenty-third, next Tuesday, for somebody that's got a voice for you and your kids. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Darryl Eustace, please come forward and share with us your final apology.
I grew up in this county and, and the town, you know, I was born in Scottsboro, raised at Holly Tree, got married twenty-seven years ago to San Diego, because we worked, I worked at the hospital, so I had to be on constantly moving to Scottsboro. Nineteen ninety-seven, our first child went into school, we've had a child there ever since. Got three more years to go. This is a very important thing to make out of a very vested interest in. Now, I've already been here, okay? I'm an incumbent, I'm a, a lot of people who like incumbents. I had somebody at car the other day, they said, oh, yeah, I'll vote for you as long as we get all these people out. Guess what? I don't know. Then I have to explain why. Now, I could've walked off and just took them up, but, you know, I am what I am, okay? It doesn't mean I'm winning. So whatever you've gotten over the last term is what you're gonna get, just more of it. If you like it, great, if you don't, I'm sorry. But I'm gonna make a decision that is prudent, whether it's popular or not. Prudent decisions are not always popular decisions. I'll listen to you, I'll try to make the best choice. As far as, you know, degrees and how to make those choices, I've got a judicial doctorate, a master's degree in business, and a bachelor's degree in public administration. Okay, so I've got the tools up in there, you know, I've got the T-shirt, okay? But it's mostly about our children, and that's what keeps me up late at night working on this kind of stuff and answering those of you who call me and ask me questions. And I, I'm still gonna be the same person. If you ask me a question, I'm gonna give you the answer, it may not be what you want here, but it's what I think, it's what I think is best, and we'll figure it out from there and make progress. So August twenty-third, ask for your vote. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Eustace. And now, Mr. Ricky Dooley.
I've got one promise to make, that I'll cast all my votes for best interest of the students. And I'll have, be involved in hiring those qualified teachers to teach our students. When I was fourteen years old, when I was eight years old, I went to Scottsboro. I've been here practically the rest of my life. When I was fourteen years old, I had three paper houses in one town. My daddy had a little grocery store on the Chattanooga Highway in front of where Michael's is. I grew up in that grocery store. When I made, I went to work for the mill store. I worked there twenty-three years. The last fifteen years of my employment, I worked for Race Management Company out of, uh, South Carolina, at sales and marketing. I think that sort of gives me, um, a perspective on finances and business. I would appreciate your vote and support. I've previously served on the school board for eight years, give me a little knowledge of high works and what happens. I was at the campaign the other day, and knocked on a fellow's door, and he came to the door, and this dog came around behind the side of the house, and I guess it was a yard that had a fence around it, you know, underground fence, and he was barking, barking, barking. And so I asked the man, and I said, is that dog mine? He said, no, sir. I stepped off that porch, and that dog bent to see my hands. I looked in, and I said, I thought you said that dog didn't bite. He said, hey, they ain't my dog.
Thank you, Mr. Dooley. Ladies and gentlemen, these are your candidates for the Scottsboro City Board of Education. Uh, let's give them a round of applause.
As a, as a member of the Jackson County Board of Education, I want to applaud you for your willingness to, to run and to serve, to be the most important people in our county and our state, and actually, that's our young people. So thank you for that, and good luck to everyone here.
At this time, we're gonna take a short break to allow these candidates to exit the stage, and now our Scottsboro City Council candidates to take the stage, and we will be back to our program in just a few minutes. Thank you.